Need order. Form please state the prayer pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, give us some proof, please.
Father God in heaven, we come to you in the name of your son, Jesus, asking. For grace and mercy upon every council member in here, on every citizen in here, God, that your will will be done. God throughout this town of Montavista and throughout the valley. Lord, protect us and give us strength and guidance in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Need a vocal?
Counselor Howard?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Watson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sikola?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
That we do have a call in this evening and Councilor Lorenz is joining us by Zoom.
Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Approval of consent agenda minutes, a regular meeting from December nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and approval of accounts payable.
So I'll move. Secondly.
Been moved in second into consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. And approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Sikola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
All right, citizen comments and presentations, citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit the comments to three minutes and council will not take action at this same meeting. Anybody? Got a comment?
Yes.
Be sure to write your name on that.
Sure. Um, so I was just going to ask, um, like when everybody comes out to talk about certain things that are happening now in the city. I think I asked you about it the last time and you told me just to present it in the form of a citizen comment. Maybe, um, everybody could kind of give a backstory, a little backstory when they announce things. Just because when I'm writing for the paper, it's a little bit easier to write if I have the whole story like in front of me. If that makes sense, I'm getting old. So I can't really remember everything like I used to. And that just makes it a little bit easier. So I was gonna see if that's okay for me to ask everybody. Thank you. Sorry, I'm not a good public speaker. Thank you.
Thanks, Marie. That's why I've kind of shot when you, because I'm always teasing you and when you said, yeah, I do. It's like.
And I'm a stand up comedian. I can do that in front of a thousand people, but I'm not a public speaker.
Thank you, Marine.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to scheduled appearances. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, you have filed the appropriate paperwork from the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Purchase of property located at the north end of Stallow.
So this is a piece of property that the city already owns two adjoining parcels with it. On the east end of Sickle Street. And it is not a favorable lot for any sort of building. It would have, it would. Any of our lots down there would take a lot of landfill to bring in. And and make it high enough and above the water table in that area. And so the people that have purchased it, you may have heard their name before, because we did something similar for them three years ago. In a neighborhood that's south of the city. And, um, it's the Thornbirds, Thornberries, and they are not local people. And so originally they had wanted to retire in Montavista, but I think because of health issues, they, they're not. And so the, um, the appraised property, according to him, through the assessor's office, is the, the lot is appraised at fourteen thousand. He would like two thousand dollars and the city would take it back. And so in discussing it with DJ, you know, at some point we could, we could do something with those three lots. We could use them as open space. We could kind of turn it into sort of a mini park area. But they're requesting you guys would consider purchasing it from them and we can.
What's the, how big is the lot? Like, what's the actual lot size?
My chance is that in your, is the map?
It's in the packet.
Do you know, Rob, about James?
I think it's fifty by a hundred and fifty. It's not huge. If it's the one I'm thinking of. North, south, on the down hill side, on the to the, I guess it would be the west side or.
I'm not.
There should be three lots if you drop down over the hill. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I was next to it. One's probably two, two rods. It's fifty, so.
It doesn't look like they're too small a lot. I mean, they're pretty decent size.
With the other one.
Would you like me to bring those?
That's probably.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be good.
Fifty by fifty, maybe. Forty by forty.
And he only wants two thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm. I think he bought, he bought it off of the pack sale. And that was.
I guess it's hard to get a set of tires for two thousand dollars.
You know, well.
But without a purpose for it, we're throwing good money after bad. We've got two lots we like we'll never use anyway. So now we'll have three.
That's the other, yeah, what?
We don't have a plan for it. We're just buying it because they want to sell it because they can't sell it to anybody else.
That's true.
Unless we had a purpose for it, I think it's a bad idea to purchase land just because the owner can't buy a seller. We've ended up with lots of properties that way.
I was, I was just thinking too, like, whoa, what can we utilize that land? How? It's like in a, you know, behind a neighborhood, kind of, I don't know.
How long have we owned land beside it?
I.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we probably don't know that. I was just thinking, how long have we been sitting on the other two lots?
Jason, didn't you guys get those when you were on previous councils, those other two properties?
All right, if we did, I can't remember that.
So what, what ideas again did you have?
It would just be used as city open space or potentially it could be a park down at that end of the neighborhood. We don't have, you know, if we're going to build another park, it would be over in Tierra, Tierra del Sol.
Upstate into town.
Yeah, where we've got some new building going and we've got kids and.
Cause that neighborhood has that, well, I guess it's not very close, but it's right there by Sonic.
Right.
There's that park.
Right. Yeah, except for the skate park. Well, there's no playground equipment that is south of one sixty or two eighty-five, except at Bill Nett's Elementary. All the other parks in town, it's all on the north side of the highway. So you guys can decide no, you can decide yes, we can pull it and I can tell DJ some of the other information that we're, we're missing. Uh, can you make that bigger, Nita? Does that help, Rob?
Yeah, that's Sicles and it's about a half a block away from Truman. Second block Truman. And at the corner where, um, Louder's live, right there. It's just kind of a wooded area.
It just slopes down to a field, doesn't it?
Yeah. Naked.
Next one, be sure.
Now, I was thinking that two houses directly to the east, that arrow is what I was thinking. Yeah. Cause those two homes, we can't get sewer to either. It's too far down. They have to do individual rest stations there. And they're constantly being flooded every time the water.
Why is DJ asking for this or is it just because someone asked him?
Yeah. The Thornberries got ahold of us and made the request.
And nobody's ever come to us asking about the property that we own, right?
Not that I'm aware. Like we're opposite. It's pretty swampy down there. And so it would take a lot of fill to be able to put a house on it.
That's a slough, so it's kind of a waterway, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
So there's really not much you can do with the waterway anyway. Right?
One, so just one thing that just popped in my head is a place for kids to go sledding. You know, like, I don't know if something like that would be big enough. You know, like, no.
Not, not a good, good run. It's not that, it's not that far down.
Plus it looks like there's a slew interrupting it and then you've got someone else's field on the other side. Doesn't seem like it'd be much of that.
I mean, it's a little, it's like a pit for, it's more than what most kids have.
Part of me is like, why doesn't he just offer it to the public for two thousand dollars? Cause I have no doubt somebody would bite on that. Or something. I mean, if he lowered his price to two thousand dollars and offered it to the public, surely someone would take it off his hands.
And maybe we can tell them about our land that we have there too.
Well, and then it would keep it on the tax rolls too. Cause if we purchase it, it comes off the tax rolls.
I just don't see what we'd have it or we could use it for anything besides a very small green space, a very small.
Counsel, not that I'm actually in favor of this, but, um, just something to, and if you could pull up that other picture. Um, kind of explains why we bought the other property. If you notice where Sicles is and then that orange square, the, the two squares that we own. Um, there's no direct access to those two back lots without that yellow one. Uh, and that's why we bought that other property because it was landlocked and they were unable to get an access to the property. And that's according to the state of Colorado, that's illegal. You can't subdivide without having an access.
Okay, so there's.
Lots were made. It was technically illegal unless there's a dedicated right of way that extends that city road just north of Sicles there. That's a right of way and that's okay. But if it's not, that piece of property would be the only access to that rear property.
Okay, so there is something that could be a benefit out.
Good, but I, I kind of second Jason's thing, um. So I just, I, I want counsel to know all the aspects of it and understand why we purchased the other property or what, cause I brought that to you guys.
I'd say it's probably, you know, measurement, maybe four thousand square feet.
Do you know how much they currently pay in property taxes?
Long the pass on it. Unless, unless there's a reason to provide access to the other properties. I mean, the one, the orange square on the right seems like you can't get to it anyway. So is this, is this slide down the middle? Is that a road right of way or dedicated right of way or something?
Yeah, I don't know. It looks like it wasn't intended to be a right of way.
Right.
But whether or not it was actually determined to be a right of way, I don't know.
Who owns that one?
The orange, two.
The orange, right?
That's my understanding.
Well, who owns the path in the middle or slot in the middle?
I'm gonna pull up the assessor's segment now and see what they say.
I apologize for not being more prepared on this.
Yeah, I'd say, if the orange properties were, were adjoining and give access to them, might be of use, but I wonder about the right now. Seems like we've got a piece of property that can't get to anyway.
I just really don't see any point of the city being in the land ownership game, but I mean, like, I mean, I can't see spending tax dollars for that personally. Unless it served a specific purpose, like it actually benefited us in some way, but I really think the person had no problem selling it. If they just marketed it to the public of two thousand dollars, I would think someone would bite on that just for the investment purpose of it. Uh, me personally, I don't think we should be in the game of buying that property. Unless it's very specifically benefits us in some way, benefits everybody in the city.
What information were you trying to find?
Basically that little section right in between them.
It doesn't show who owns that section in between them.
That's what I was trying to look up.
The piece next to the yellow triangle.
The little shin in the back.
So the, this piece right here, Hector Sikola owns that. The city owns these two parcels. The Thornberries own this.
And who owns the other one to the left?
Uh, this one here.
Oh, the, the red one right to the left of the yellow, no.
To the left.
There you go.
I don't have any owner written on that one either.
Is that a relative?
My brother.
That one is, um, Jacob Ward.
Oh, Jacob and Calvin.
Jacob and Reagan.
Jacob and Reagan Ward.
See, if it was me and I was that person, I would offer it to that person that owned that small piece of property and see if they wanted to just make a bigger lie of it.
That would be telling.
Consent is to no action?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Discussion on lead and copper lines. Rob Dance, Public Works.
I know you guys have heard me talk a little bit about the lead and copper rule, but, um, Gigi asked that I would give a more detailed, um, discussion on not only the rule, but what's coming up. Um, we've heard me talk about that we sent, um, we had to do an inventory of our service lines and you also probably received a letter from us stating that we probably didn't know what your line was and we needed some help. Um, but I wanted to go through and just kind of give you a little bit first background. Um, if those in the audience and those listening and council, if you remember on the news a year, a couple of years back, well, three or four years, Flint, Michigan. And the problems that they had with their water system.
Still have.
Yep. And, and basically what they did was they were getting water from another municipality. They figured the rates were too high. And they talked to another municipality that had the ability to provide them water as well. They proposed a lower price, so they switched, thinking they were doing a good thing for their consumers. Unfortunately, the composition of the two water sources were different. And once they introduced the new system water into their distribution system, it caused their lines to de-scale, which means all the scale and stuff that was there, um, started to come off and started getting in the system. Um, most of their lines were, had lead in them. And it basically polluted the entire community of Flint, Michigan. Provided lead to all the residents, um, kids and, and I think we all know what lead can do to people's health. So, um, that's the start of it. In twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, the EPA started a lead and copper rule and they had provisions that they were trying to redo and the deadline was late twenty-four, um. This rule is still very, very fluid. So what I'm telling you, and I'm going to kind of post on some of the things that are coming up that council needs to know about, because unfortunately, they do have some fairly serious financial burdens that the city may have to take. I don't want to sound a better or bad news, but anyways, I'm just going to go through. I'm not going to read everything in your packet is the documents that you need to see, um. In August of twenty-three, the federal lead and copper rule revisions were adopted into the Colorado primary drinking regulations, regulation eleven. Um, the LCCR has new requirements for water systems, which requirement an inventory of the materials of service lines connected to the distribution system. The service line inventory serves as a backbone for many other requirements of the LCRR. Um, so we had to by October sixteenth, we had to inventory all of our service lines within the city and those areas just outside the city that we provide water for. Um, by definition, especially with our code, the service line is the line that extends from our main to a building frontage. In our case, we are separated by a curb stop. So the city maintains from the city main to the curb stop. And from the curb stop to the home or the business, that is the responsibility of the property owner. Um, under this rule, we have to in our inventory, we have to know what both sides are. So we've been working on that, um. They didn't give us a whole lot of time. August of twenty-three is when the rule came down. The deadline for it was October sixteenth of twenty-four. For our system, um, we have little over twenty-seven hundred taps. We were able to exclude all taps or any homes or businesses that were built after nineteen eighty-eight. That's when Colorado adopted the no lead requirement within the state. Um, we tried some other things to try to get, unfortunately, our data cards that we have from back in the fifties and sixties, they didn't classify what materials were used. So we weren't able to do that. We then contracted with one twenty water to try to make sure that they, according to their advertisement, their expertise would help us get through that program. Um, and we signed in, in council allowed us to sign the two-year contract with them for services, trying to get up to this. Um, they went ahead and went through the assessor's websites and they pulled all the data. Um, we had staff at the time go up to the building department, pull what files they had on the city's buildings to see if we could find any, any type of materials. We were able to get a few out of those, but for the most part, those files didn't really provide us really a whole lot of guidance. So last year, in between everything else, I had crews out potholing, um, the curb stop areas and, and meter pits, um, trying to figure out what we had on our side and what we had on the customer side. We wound up submitting our inventory with a little seventeen hundred and twenty-six unknown lines out of the twenty-seven hundred and thirty-some, um, taps that we have in town. Um, so according to the rule, after that, we had to supply notice to all citizens that had an unknown line by November fifteenth of the same year, so last year. Um, we did that. We got all those notices out, all seventeen hundred and twenty-six of them. Um, luckily so far we've achieved about three hundred responses. And so far, knock on wood, um, we don't have any lead lines. Um, a lot of manufacturers from the research I was doing and Bobby, um, it said back in nineteen sixty-sixty-six, um, a lot of manufacturers stopped using lead in a lot of the fittings. Um, so we were confident, but not confident enough to actually put that in to our inventory to the state that our system doesn't have any lead. Um, and we were kind of functioning on some of that. We were still trying to pothole, um, throughout the course of the year. And then, um, Del Norte started their sidewalk project. And, um, their public works director and I had talked and, and Bobby had talked with him. And we were all under the same assumption until they started pulling up sidewalk. And Del Norte has found some lead lines and led pigtails in their system. So that put us back a little bit. Um, so we went ahead and we sent that out. Um, I just, so that's where we are currently now. We've met all of the state's compliance requirements. Um, what we need to do now, as we move into twenty-five, is we have applied for a grant to the state to continue to use Sunrise Engineering that, that is the state engineer that they use that helped us. We've got a grant last year to kind of push us through the, the October sixteenth, because one twenty water just wasn't, what they promised and what they delivered weren't the same. They provided us a form, but it didn't match Colorado's form. So it would have required us to go ahead and convert every piece of data that we had on their form over to Colorado's. Unfortunately, the state went ahead and let us have a grant and use Sunrise Engineering and they did that legwork for us. So, and they've been really helpful. So Michelle Bradford, um, our planning and a public works associate, um, she went ahead and applied already last month for this year's funding to keep Sunrise on. So now that we have our list of unknowns, our next step is to evaluate and do a systematic, um, pothole. And, and it's basically, what we have to do is we have to determine a, a set parameters, twenty percent of our system based on years of building. So for us, most of those buildings took place in the fifties and sixties. So we're going to have to take twenty percent of that seventeen hundred, um, taps and pothole those, not only because another rule change that came about after we started doing all this is you're not allowed to use your meter or the curb stop as the basis. You have to plug out at the main and then at the property where that goes into the house. Those are the two locations. Um, we are still trying to figure out how we're going to get on the people's property and put a nice hole in their grasses or whatever it is next to their foundation. Um, to figure out what that line is. So we're hoping to get a lot more, um, people to actually give us the thing. We've also implemented based on those things that a lot of people just can't get under their hopes. They're not, they're of the age or the health that they just simply can't do it. So we're scheduling appointments right now for our crew to go in there and do those tests on how to determine what the line is. So we can get that data without doing any property damage. Um, so I'll stop there for just a second. Do you guys have any questions on what's going on up to now? Okay.
I do.
Yes.
So Rob, can, can we make the assumption that if you're on one block of whatever street? And we know that those homes were built prior to nineteen eighty-eight. Can we just hit one or two of the homes and make the assumption in that block? Can we just hit one or two of the homes and make the assumption in that block is all? Uncompliant?
In in the very simplest terms, yes, that is a possible um thing. Unfortunately, for us, the state wants us to do what they're classifying as predictive modeling. Which takes an engineer to actually pull that same information that you just described and put it in a computer program. And it will randomly select addresses that we then have to go pot. Um, but yes, if we can do that and we can prove those lines are galvanized or copper. Then as long as they're not led, then we're safe, we can go ahead and classify those, we don't have to do any action items.
From our standpoint, Rob, what is the expected obligation of the property owner?
So to test. That eh to test the property owner unless it's a school district, doesn't have any obligation, the obligation falls to the city. Um, we are currently and have been doing lead testing and so far, we have not hit the trigger point. The trigger point for what they call tier one testing, which is every six months. Is a um test that comes back at, uh, let me see, it is sixteen. No, ten parts per billion. Um, and we have never hit that mark. So so far, we don't have any lead in our system. And that is published in our consumer um confidence reports that we do annually. So we don't have any detectable lead in our system. If for some reason we have that, then we'd have to go on the tier one notifications, which we'd have to send out to not only the property owner. But all property owners downstream. For the five properties downstream, we have to then. Go ahead and replace their service lines with new lines. At least our side and the the newest rule, like I said, please remember this is fluid, this keeps changing almost monthly. The new rule is that we have to provide. To the property owner a financing option if they cannot afford to do their own loan. So somehow the city's going to have to finance to replace what is, in essence. From the city main, which is generally in the middle of the street, all the way up to the foundation of the home or the business. Okay, and that's if we find a lead exposure. Another thing that they've added to that um recently is if we have what is called a lead pigtail. And those were used um. A lot in the fifties and even in the sixties and definitely before the fifties, if anything was built, you know. Early nineteen hundreds, nineteen thirties, nineteen twenties, forties, um, for the bigger lines. They would use what is called the lead pigtail, they would basically take. Three or four smaller taps, cause that's what they had drill size, so they would use like three quarter inch taps, three of them. To get to an inch and a half. And then they would use this lead pigtail that took those three taps and combined them into one line attached to, usually it was a galvanized. One and a half inch piece of pipe, and that's what they did to those bigger lines. So, there is a possibility of having the lead pigtails in the city. Uh, we did have some over here at Fulton Wyder Park, um, which were removed um. When we did the project back in two thousand twelve. So we know that section's not a contaminant source anymore. And those have been noted in their inventory, but we're not sure, you know, what else, you know, what could be in the system. So those are the things, currently as it stands, lead pigtails do not. Require the notice. However. Based on the words that we're hearing coming up in twenty seven, which is the new. EPA, when we're going to finish our rules that was supposed to be done in twenty four. Um, they are talking about including anything lead pigtail and galvanized lines. If they do include galvanized lines into this new rule. By twenty seven, we will have to replace, in my estimation, ninety percent. Of our distribution system, service lines. Okay, so that's, please keep that in mind, that to us will be a huge financial burden. Because not only do we have to replace ours. But we have to provide a financing option to any of the people that cannot afford to replace their portion of the lot. So uh the requirement for us for twenty five is we have to predictive model twenty percent of our seventeen hundred service. If for some reason in that period, we either have an exceedance of the ten parts per billion. Or we find a lead line. We will then have to do what they classify as a tier one notification, we'll have to send within twenty four hours. We'll have to send notification to the state and we'll have to send notice to all. Of our residents about a lead exceedance or a found lead line. For the property owner whose lead line we find, we are required to replace that line. To monitor their property for the next five years, so it becomes one of our testing sites. Um. We also have to provide them and the downstream users. Uh, water filter, a water pitcher and um, what else is it? Hold on, I've had a mark all these things to do the different rules and regulations. So you need um, you have to flush consumer notification, a free pitcher, filter and. Um, point of use device with replacement cartridges. And you have to do that for a minimum of six months. What I do not have is the actual definition of downstream users. So I don't know at this time how many downstream users we would have to provide that service to. So that is an unknown, the state has not given me an answer as of yet. To how they determine what is downstream and it's a little difficult to do when you have a looped system. Cause each line is fed by at least two different sources, so. It's kind of a toss up as to who's downstream, who's upstream. So I'm still waiting on that one, but that's a financial burden that has a very real possibility of coming up this year. That has not been budgeted for, um, I am hoping. That we will find no lead lines. Um, I cannot guarantee that, but that is the thing, um. And then. Kinda in summary, cause I know I've kinda chatted along, this is, like I said, this is so fluid, it's so difficult to really. Really kind of talk about everything, um. I guess takeaways, we are compliant as of the deadlines that have been done on January fifteenth, twenty twenty one. As far as the submission of our inventory and also notice for any unknown lines. At this point, we don't have any lead in our system. All of our tests have come back in a positive way, meaning there is no lead in the system and we have found no lead lines. Um, in twenty five, we will be doing. The twenty percent predictive modeling and starting to get those potholes done throughout the course of the year. To do that, we are waiting for word on the grant. Hopefully, we should, we were one of the first ones that's applied and the way the state's doing it is they're awarding grants as long as they have money. So. Um, and then we met with some, a senator and and a representative ours today. And their budget, the state's budget is still kind of up in the air as well, so we'll find out where everything goes, but we should. As long as everything goes well, um, we should have funding this year to do that predictive modeling. Hopefully, that twenty percent will exclude us from doing anything else, but we'll have to see the results of that, what that comes from. Um, but please understand that as it stands now by twenty seven, which is really not that far away. Um, the EPA will make its final decisions as to what type of lines that we have in our system. And what the rule is going to cover, and right now the top is galvanized lines. So any homes that were built prior to nineteen seventy and even some after nineteen seventy. Have used, that's been a standard water installation line for decades, um. So there's a good chance that people have galvanized lines, um. For the people listening and the people in the audience, if you have any question, please get ahold of Michelle Bradford at the city. Seven one nine eight five two two six nine two caller. Will be happy to set up an appointment, I'll send my text over and they will get under your house and figure out what your lines are, okay? That's what we're, it's one of our priorities for this coming year. Is to make sure that we get as many of our unknowns covered as we possibly can. And that is far easier than actually going out and doing an excavation. Um, we do have a a ditch switch, so we can do a hydro excavation, which will make the excavation site much smaller. Than if we were to do the backhoe or a mini X, um, but still, it's still, still a burden.
Brankler systems, you got all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, so. And and they did it, and like I said, I don't wanna go through this document, I'll let you guys read it at your leisure, um. It did preclude being using, cause that's what I wanted to use. Is the the curb stop or the meter pit, cause those are on our property. And but they've excluded that in the newest state resident requirements that you cannot use that location as your thing. So, um, I guess with that, I just opened it up for any questions, I know I've kind of rambled on for a long time.
You know, all the uh, they were available funding or anything like those, do you?
Right now, they are offering um funding. Um, the one part that we're not sure how to really implement is that portion. For the the property owner's line, um, like I said, the rule all it states is that we have to provide a financing option. So I don't know if that's something that we carry in-house or if we have to work through some bank. But yet again, the city's gonna have to take some sort of a liability standpoint, cause I know banks aren't necessarily just gonna. Hand money out without having some sort of reassurance of repayment, so.
Plus there's a lot of other places where it's slab on grade and that's coming up somewhere in the house and up, so.
Yeah.
Actually getting it swapped out means tearing up slab to do it, or using that existing pipe as a sleeve of some sort, right?
And we can look at ground bursting and things like that, I'm not sure how well that works in this area. I don't know of many people that are using that technology in here. Um, so I'm not real sure how it'll work and usually with a three quarter inch line, um, that's not really an option. You can usually go bigger, but you can't go smaller.
Plus like three quarters galvanized is probably necked in so much, you're not getting anything.
You're right, right. And like I said, uh, our requirement as it stands is we have to replace up to the foundation of the building, so if it's slab on grade. We still only have to go there, it is the property's owner requirement and their expectation to fix whatever's in their house.
And will the city bear any, like if they only fix up to a certain extent, does the city bear issues with that, I mean like?
Well, the, yes.
Would I come back and buy?
So if, what what the rule says is that if a property owner says, you know what, based on everything I've seen and read, I wanna go ahead and replace my line. We have forty five days from that notice to also replace our segment of that lot. So like I said, the financial burden um has the potential to just be astronomical.
Yeah, I'm sure everybody in here is trying to figure out how old their house is right now.
Well, a- and and that's the thing is, you know, and 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 I'm I'm in that same boat, you know, I need to crawl under my house. And go figure out where our line comes in and see what it is. I'm hoping it's copper, I know what's under the house is copper, but I've never actually taken the time to go. See where it actually comes up out of the ground or what that is, I know everything that we have in our house is copper. But you know, and and every citizen's gonna be doing the same thing.
Honestly, mine's copper coming in, but case in point. Mine's coming into a concreted crawl space and it comes up in a sense like you couldn't get another line in there if you had.
Yeah, so and that's the problem, a- and we do have several. Properties that have crawl spaces where even my skinny guys can't get into, you know. I did mine at four feet, cause I'm a big guy.
I can stand up in mine, I said, I'm over in the crawl space, I'm a little tall.
So, does anybody have any questions? I'm sorry I took so long, but. It's stuff you guys need to know about, and it's like I said, unfortunately, this rule is fluid, a- a- and I'm serious, every month. A new thing comes out and changes, I mean, we haven't received anything in December, but up through October. Every month it was a change, it was this, it was that, it was this. Um, so I expect now that we get into the new year, that some of those changes are gonna continue, the big ones. For me and for us is the galvanized lines. And the requirement for financing people that cannot afford to do their service line. And we all hope we don't have lead, um, fortunately, our tests so far have not. Have have substantiated that we do not have lead in our system, so that's the good news.
Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero one, a resolution setting meeting days for Montevista City Council and designating. Public place for hosting the meeting notice.
Good evening, council, uh, this is just a routine uh resolution, this is just setting the regular meeting for the city of Montevista Council. For the first Thursday of each calendar month and the third Thursday of each calendar month at six P M. At the city of Montevista located at ninety five West First. At Montevista, work sessions would be called out by council at any time as voted on at a regular scheduled meeting or scheduled by the city manager. The place for posting would be notice of meetings shall be on the front door, south door. Of the city of Montevista and with the city of Montevista's base um website. I just ask for your approval for resolution twenty twenty five dash zero.
Like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash zero one. Resolution setting meeting days for Montevista City Council and designating a public space of posting meeting notices.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve. Resolution two zero two five dash zero one, resolution setting meeting days for Montevista City Council. And designating a public place for posting meeting notices, is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Fratim Segula?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash oh one, a resolution setting meeting days for. Montevista City Council and designating a public place for posting of meeting notices.
Right, contracts, agreements, leases, C dot. Funded project twenty twenty five crack seal, crack seal runway from Montevista Marina Airport.
So. One more time, sorry, you guys have to see me again, I'll keep this one fairly short, so. This is a grant agreement through C dot Aeronautics and B I L monies, so that's the the. The ARPA funds, if you will, um, to allow us to do some more crack seal out at the airport. Um, the airport runway um rehabilitation project has been postponed. Until approximately twenty thirty two, it was originally slated to go in twenty twenty eight. Um, but due to a lack of funding on both the federal side and the state side and our side. Um, it's been pushed back to twenty three, three, thirty two, sorry, um. But in the meantime. Sorry, um but in the meantime, we have cracks that exceed one inch in in diameter or length. Um so we need to do something more of a mastic, more a more substantial crack seal. So this project, um if you agree and approve it, allows us to use bill money to go ahead. Through the state grant, we have a five percent cash match that we have to do on the project. Um that so we can get the crack seal done and get the mastic in to. Observe our runway as best we can until the twenty thirty two timeline. So happy to answer any questions. Like I said, again, this grant that you're approving is with. C dot aeronautics and of course our consultants, the aviation planning group would be the consulting engineers that would design the specs. That would have to be approved. Because mastic is not generally something that the FAA looks at. It's not something they do, but it will work with ours, so. And the C dot is willing to approve it.
What do you need from us?
I I need a a vote to approve.
I make a motion to approve the C dot funded project one twenty five crack seal of runway of Montevista Municipal.
It's been moved and seconded uh through the C dot. C dot funded project of twenty twenty five crack and seal of runway from Montevista City Municipal Airport. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Fratton Segula?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the C dot funded project for twenty twenty five for the crack seal of the runway for the Montevista Municipal Airport.
All right, we will move on to staff proposals, reports and actions. City clerk.
Good evening again. Um just a couple of things I wanted to go over with you this evening. Um we sent out business license renewals for this year. We sent out two hundred and sixty renewals. That is for storefronts, online and home-based businesses. So far, we have a hundred and seventy two renewals back. So people are already getting their renewals back. So we'll give it till the end of January. And then we'll send out a second round of renewals for the remaining businesses. Um ending the year, we had two hundred and thirty one court cases to end the year of twenty twenty four. Um alcohol beverage and delivery takeout will end on July first, twenty twenty five. Unless they get a license through the state to continue delivery and carry out of alcoholic beverages. For hotel and restaurants. So if you want to get an alcohol beverage to go do it before July. Um and that's Senate Bill twenty or twenty four twenty. Um so that is ending in July. And then the other one. That I wanted to let you know too is um House Bill twenty four thirty one or thirteen seventy one. Is um more uniformed um. Regulations for local massage facilities. So we do have a a couple of massage facilities here in town. Um the one is a massage facility for a physical therapy center. So they are actually already covered under this regulation. The other one, um I did have them already follow this rule. This rule doesn't actually go into effect until October first of twenty twenty five. But I did have them go ahead and follow the rule. They had to supply a certificate showing that they were registered um and licensed massage therapist. Um at least the owner does, and that is a mandate through the state. So that is something else that is coming up. Um and then in February, I will give you all a end of the year report with numbers.
Public Works.
Um I'm going to keep this really short. Um we are basically just closing out twenty four. Um most of the public works, we are functioning off of a skeleton crew. A lot of my. Crew have taken this last few weeks of December off to try to recuperate and get ready for twenty five. So next week we'll be fully staffed and and heading into twenty five. Looking forward to what it brings. Um really, the only update I would have for council as far as the Christmas decorations. Will be starting to take that down the week of the eleventh. And we're going to leave the snowflakes up up until probably February, then taking them down. That's it. Alright.
Thank you, Rob. P D?
You don't have a report for P D this time.
Okay. I T? Oz? Run center, young man.
In the mayor council? Well, he's been a minute since I've been up here in front of everybody. But I just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. Going to keep it short and sweet as usual though. So we did a cell phone upgrade for DJ. His phone is up for upgrade as his phone was up for me to your plan. Every two years, we're allowed to refresh cell phones, so he just asked to be soft from an Android and iPhone, so he went ahead and accommodated that for him. Kids connection was having an issue with their data tablet. That is a tablet they use for their um check in when they're picking kids up from the schools and all that. That has been rectified. It was an issue with their data plan through AT and T. AT and T U allows us to change that over. No problems without any extra charge. We have a secondary monitor out here in council chambers at request of Unida. It just allows her to pull up files on the side. And not have to interrupt council midway through. We have another UPS in our server rack. We were doing this as we were having issues with with redundancy. We were hitting brownouts to the point where our servers would go down during those brownouts and that would just cause data loss or unable to be act or. Data unable to be accessed. So we put another UPS in place to have our power supplies run off with two different UPSs. So one goes out, the other one stays running. Went ahead and pushed the updates to to Cassell. They had a few updates, just trying to make things a little bit more smoothly. I'm not sure what those updates entail. And then we have a new monitor for Zeke over in Investigations. He was requesting an ultra wide monitor. Similar to what he's seen with CBI as it allows him to see stuff a little bit better. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Any questions?
Question, guys? Thank you.
I won't believe me.
As well. City manager. Is that sticky now?
I gotta remember how to say these words.
Still amazes me how much she can get on that little piece of paper.
Well, I'm not as talkative today. And as Rob had mentioned, we met with Senator Simpson and Representative Martinez today along with our. Engineers from Element on the wastewater treatment plant. Because we cannot get the affluent. Um. Uh affluent measure, what what? Now I don't even have it in front of me.
Women are affluent limits.
The preliminary affluent levels. And we have to have that permit, so we know how to finish designing the wastewater treatment plant. And C D P H E is supposed to do this within a hundred and eighty days. They have told us time and time again, they're not going to get it, get to it. They're not looking at plant, they're looking at plants that are smaller than ours and trying to get those done. And so we've called in. The senator and representative to go try to. Put a little stick of dynamite underneath their their feet and get us what we need. Because if we don't know what we're designing to. We can't put it out to bed. And that just leaves us open for them to come back later and say, oops. Montevista is going to cost another two million dollars because we've got to fix it to this limit and we set it at that. So. We're hoping that they can help. Move this along so we get can get some resolution and we can get this out to bed then after the first of the year. I sent you all. Valley views that I did on for the radio. It's fifteen minutes long. It will, it kind of gives you a snapshot of all the projects we've got going on for this upcoming year. And um. So instead of just rattling through all that. I'll say that's it. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Anybody got questions for? No.
Staff's in good shape. Um only vacancies that we have right now. We've, we're still looking for another code enforcer. And then we have an officer position from when he left, so. We're looking pretty good right now.
Alright, we're going to council committee, city commission and council reports.
Counselor Watson, well, I got all kinds of things to say, just not publicly, so no. Thanks for your honesty. Counselor Howard? Nope.
Okay, Counselor Lorenz?
Nothing for me.
Mayor Fratton?
Happy New Year. Hope everybody has a happy new year.
Very good. Let me get my label. We're just going to go with money strong. Keep chin ups. Let's make twenty twenty five a great year. With that, we will adjourn the meeting until January sixteenth, six P M here at council chambers.